Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting of May 24, 2016. And this meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first will be the Carver Elementary School, and the second is the Borrego Solar System. Unfortunately, we have one member that's been called off to work, and we have a member that we've just called who is missing. So we just want to tell the people for Borrego Solar Systems, this may not happen tonight, because we won't have a quorum for this. So we'll go to the -- but we'll wait and see if that member shows up. So the first public hearing we have tonight is, I'll read the notice. It's in accordance with the provision of Town of Carver zoning by law, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 24, 2016 at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of the Carver Elementary School Building Committee requesting a site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100 of the Carver zoning by law located at 85 Main Street in Carver, Mass. It assesses Maps 64-Lot 10 to allow the construction of a 112,350 square foot elementary school with parking, utilities, playing fields, and other site improvements in the general business zoning district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board Chair Bruce Mackey. And it was published, Carver Reporter, published dates May 6 and 13 of 2016. So what do we have? So who do we have tonight here to discuss this?
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Matt LaRue, the project manager for HMFH Architects on this project, and we're pleased to bring the project before you tonight and provide as much information about the project as we can and answer your questions. I brought with me some representatives from our project team, from the design team, and I'll just introduce them quickly. We have Chuck Kozlowski from Halverson Design Partnership. They're the landscape architects for the project. And then we also have Jennifer Dalton from Niche Engineering, the civil engineers on the project. And then additionally seated behind Jennifer is Chad Crittenden. He's from PMA Consultants. They're the owners' project manager. So we're going to walk you through a few different facets of the project, and a lot of that has been reflected in the set of plans and documents that was already provided. We got some initial feedback through Marlene McCollum about the review that's happened at the Town Department level, and we're going to try to address any of those that we can tonight, but we'll certainly follow up with any information that we need. So let me just jump right into the drawings. This is just the existing conditions survey. I just want to orient you to where the project is happening on the site. So Main Street, Loop 58 occurs at the top of the screen, top of the board here, and north is in this direction. So the two buildings that occupy the site are here, about in the middle of the site, the John Carver building being the front building, and the Irvin Loschburn building being the rear building. Where the play fields are on the west side of the site is where the new school building is going to be. That will get constructed first while the two schools remain in operation. And that's going to be about a two-year-long construction period. And we've been devising some logistics plans that show how the site is going to continue to be used while the contractors are building their new building on that side of the site. And then once that building is complete, the existing buildings will be able to be taken down. New parking will be constructed at about the middle part of the site, and then on the very eastern part of the site, where there's some play spaces and parking, that will get turned into athletic fields. There's also a new drinking water well that's going to be installed as part of this project. And that well will be located in the far southeast corner of the site, and will have a protection zone around it, which nothing can be built in. So that's all been planned and is in the process of getting approved with the DEP. So with that, I want to just turn immediately to the landscape architect and have Chuck start to talk to you about the overall layout of the site plan and traffic circulation issues. He's also brought along some information about play spaces, playground equipment, and plantings and other features, so we'll get right into that. And then Jennifer will talk about site drainage and any of the kind of systems on the site. Then I'll come back, and I'll talk to you a little bit about the lighting in the building.
Chuck Kozlowski, a principal with Halverson Design Partnership in Boston. Figured we'd start with an overall site plan so that we can get your bearings on where things are. As Matt had mentioned earlier, the existing building is approximately here. And so here's the new building. Presently, this is an entrance into the site, and this is an exit. And as part of the design, those two entrances, that entrance and exit are being reversed. So that entry will now become here, and exit will be there. This exit has also, presently, this entrance, which is becoming an exit, is sliding over approximately 20 feet or so, and has been coordinated with the construction that's going on on Main Street. Think I'll jump to this first and then go back to, because I know you'll be asking questions about circulation. Seems as if I'll just jump to it. This area here, which is the front of the school, there's an outdoor gathering space here for kids, and this area here becomes parent drop-off. Parents will drive in here, follow this line. Drop-off will begin here, and it'll stretch back to as far as it needs to in order to accommodate the amount of cars there. Presently, on the site, there is 430 feet of area for drop-off. This new line of drop-off is 776 feet total of drop-off. There was another option also, that if that were not to be enough, we would eliminate the movement here for drop-off. Parents would come in this way, wind this way here, and then around, and that would go up to 1,095 feet of drop-off. So we feel like in the first option, we've almost doubled the amount of drop-off space that we have presently. So I think that we've been able to accommodate the amount of cars that would be there. At any one time, we could have 39 cars parked from here to here, and they won't all be there for the entire 15 minutes, so it'll constantly be movement. Cars will, kids will drop off, other cars can pull out and go there and out. This other line that you see is the bus drop-off, and the buses will be coming in in the same way. It's one-way in, and they will go to the back of the school. And this zone here is the drop-off zone for the buses. And they'll start here, and then they'll just back up, and as soon as these buses are unloaded, other buses will pull in. It's not intended for it to be buses going by other buses here. And that has a total of six buses here, and 19 buses from here out to here. Well, again, we feel like that's more than ample to handle the amount of bus traffic that'll be entering the site.
Excuse me. We're told that 20 buses will be the maximum that they will have to be on-site at any one time.
We have 30-foot radiuses at both the entrance and the exit. We have roadways 24-foot wide. The aisles here are 24-foot wide, 18-foot long spaces, 9-foot wide. There's 197 parking spaces, which includes six handicaps. Any questions on the circulation?
I have one.
Sure.
Did you look at the congestion with the private vehicles leaving, with the bus leaving at the same time, exiting onto, how it wraps around and they both merge?
Well, we have looked at that, and we feel that it's going to work more than adequately. And Jennifer, do you have any comment on that too?
No, other than the fact that we did look at the width of the roadway with respect to the bus sizes and making sure that there was adequate space provided for both types of vehicles.
What we're providing in the new design is that for the exit from the site, it'll be two lanes, so that cars or vehicles that are turning right will be in one lane, and cars turning left will be in their other lane. So you'll be able to double the amount of stacking that happens right at that exit. And additionally, we understand that buses get priority from dismissal, so they let those leave first before the parent pickup starts happening, and so there'll actually be a staggered dismissal.
How about coming in, the buses and the parents coming in at the same time?
They are arriving at the same time, but what's different in the morning is that the buses are arriving individually. As they gather kids and pick them up in town, they're arriving, and they're dropping off and leaving. So they're not all being stacked up on-site and leaving at the same time like they are in the afternoon.
I know sometimes, like on rainy days, the parent drop-off gets pretty backed up, and that was, so buses are coming in, and that lane's filled.
Right.
Will there be, obviously designated, that buses only maybe left?
Yes, I think through signage and possibly through striping on the road, we would designate bus lane in one lane and parents in the other lane.
Also intended to be staffed with people from the school, telling people where they need to go, especially in the beginning.
The only other question I had was the alternate going around the parking lot for traffic. Is that just an alternate? That wouldn't be a primary usage?
If for some reason it was found that this just wasn't adequate, that adds another 400 feet or so of road or of drop-off stacking room.
Thank you.
I don't have any other comments, but I will open this up to the public.
Well, there's more to show.
Oh, yeah, more? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's just about circulation, that's. Okay?
Thank you.
Well, we can certainly go back to it. I just wanted to give a quick overview of, I mentioned this is the drop-off area and also the front of the school. This will be an outdoor patio area with a covered canopy structure, and some space here for some seating, some seating involved with the canopy. This is heavily bollarded here, so that cars can't come up on here. Main entrance to the school is here. These areas that you see here are the play areas. This is a fenced-in area for pre-k. This is an unfenced area for kindergarten. These two areas here are for grades 1 through 5. I had mentioned earlier that this is where the buses come in, but during the times that the buses are no longer there, these gates will be closed. There are steel arms that pivots and closes up, so it's a 24-foot span here, and also at this location. So this becomes vehicle-free, and the intent is that some of this area will be painted, this is asphalt drive, some of this area will be painted with games such as four-square or hopscotch, that kind of thing there. These areas here will all have play equipment. I'll just show you some quick images of that also. This is our entrances for getting into the school at the time of bus drop-off and dismissal. And this is a free-play area, so this will be more of lawn and some logs and a slide that's built into a little hill here. And so it's intended to be a different type of a kind of playground than these other ones. But the idea is that, you know, the pre-k's going to have their own specific area, kindergarten their own specific area, and 1 through 5 their own specific area. There are also, you can see on here, basketball courts that are further up, they're about here on the site, and they'll be there, but there are also going to be a couple of basketball nets here. So these are just some quick, these are some quick images of what that starts to look like. This is, this material here is a port-and-place resilient surface so that it becomes an accessible surface for wheelchairs or that kind of thing. And you can see this one has the fence around it. Again, that's the pre-k, and it's required to be fenced. These areas are all adequately sized to accept the numbers that are going to be coming out of the school for each of the play periods. And these are the type of structures that we'll be using. This is still somewhat in flux because we've met with the schools just last week, and we're going to be adding a couple more handicap-inclusive structures, which means that this structure here or one similar to it would allow a ramp to actually come up into the structure, so a wheelchair can actually go up into it. And that was a request that we had from a number of parents and the school teachers themselves. So those are things that we're still working on. It's in flux, but these are the type of things that we're going to be seeing. Again, this is pre-k, and that's right here. And this here is kindergarten, and again, these are the type of structures that we'll be seeing in this area right here. And a couple of these things are going to, this one, I think this one here might even be swapped out for a new structure, but these are the idea of the kinds of things that the kids would be able to do, a lot of climbing, thumb swinging. The idea is to give them a little bit of every kind of activity. And then the third area, this, is for grades 1 through 5. And again, a little more, not adventurous, but a little more for kids who are older. There are some things that go around, some things for climbing, additional things for climbing here. A lot of these structures here have built-in things on the side for people who are in a wheelchair, or people who maybe have other disabilities can engage with their friends on the structure if they're so inclined to. Again, here's some climbing structures here also. And I had mentioned a free-play area. And the free-play area is going to be fun, and that's here. And the idea is that there'll be an area here for potentially storytime or just a little amphitheater for gathering. I think stories is probably a great spot for this. And there'll be an outdoor slide that's built into the hillside here with some logs that are intended for helping kids climb up, and there are some beams here for balancing on. And this hillside, as you see right here, is going to also help to screen the property over here from what's going on into the area over here. So that hillside is right here, and here's the slide that I just showed you right there. That's it. And I can also, if you're interested, just to quickly talk to you about some of the plantings that we're looking at. And this is some.
Domino.
In fact, it doesn't hurt.
Sorry about that. We leaned so much again.
So we're looking at, you know, trees that do well in this area. One of the trees that we're going to be replacing is an existing tree now that's on the site that is a memorial tree that really isn't in any good shape anymore, and trying to dig that up and move it isn't really, it isn't really a great option for the money. So we're going to be looking at putting in a new memorial tree, and that will be located in the front of the building here. And we're looking at this being a cats' service tree, which is a great tree, probably something that has multi-stem or a single stem with low branching coming out of it. And then some of the other trees that we're looking at are starburst cork tree and honey locust, service berry, which should be located here, October glory red maples, black tupelo, and corcus bicleur, which is a white oak, and some number of different kinds of elms, and some pines that are certainly indigenous to the area. And then just some of the shrub things, and certainly, we're looking at things that do well in this area, so hydrangeas, and red twig dogwoods, and so, for instance, we'll try and get some shrubs that are going to stay small so they're not going to become a nuisance or a maintenance issue further down the road. Certainly, America and some juniper, so things that people are used to seeing in this area. So that's what I have. Any questions?
School looks beautiful, with all those plantings and trees, playgrounds, quite an improvement from the older school.
Yeah.
Be very nice. Any additional questions by the board?
I have one. The back play area, the access, you said there was going to be a gate there that'd be closed?
There's a swing arm that swings this way, and there's one that swings that way. So after the last bus leaves, those get closed.
Okay, are they manual?
They are.
They are. So my concern would be this just a food for thought. In case of an emergency, God forbid, we have something like that, where we have a mass entrance of a fire apparatus, police, ambulance, what have you. Is there any way to have a auto open that would be controlled by our emergency vehicles to gather direct access, other than relying on somebody to run out there and open the gate?
I think so. Were they intended to be? Oh, go ahead.
So we've met with the fire police department on a few different occasions, and we explored multiple options. At one point, we talked about bollards, we talked about automatic gates, we talked about a locking gate, and the gate that's in there now is actually what the fire department had requested.
Okay.
Just a manual swing, no lock on it. So that's, we have been in communication with those guys.
Okay.
It's basically just there to tell people, you're not supposed to come in this entrance during that time, and it's not intended to be, you know, locked and inaccessible.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions about the landscape design, then we're going to have the civil engineer present her. Do you want to?
Maybe you.
Yeah, well, I'll hold the public comment till the end if you want to give the civil engineering aspect.
All right, so I'm going to focus on the stormwater management system for now, and then if there's any questions about other utilities, I'm happy to answer them. Again, my name is Jennifer Johnson. I'm a civil engineer with Niche Engineering, and we've been working with Halverson and HMFH to really integrate the stormwater management system into the overall project design. And we did that by looking at how the existing drainage patterns operate and really trying to maintain them and work with the natural condition of the site. So just to give you a quick overview, the northern portion of the site near Main Street does drain towards Main Street, but the rest of the site either drains to the October cranberry bog on the southern and eastern portions of the site. You can see right here, this is a proposed drain line, but it ties into an existing drain outfall, which will be maintained in the proposed condition. We're really lucky from a drainage perspective on this site because Carver, as you know, is known for its sandy soils, and that really gives us an opportunity to promote infiltration across the site, which we've done by collecting drainage from the parking lots, roof, and all the play areas, and sending them to a number of systems. There are two subsurface infiltration systems, if you're familiar with them. I don't know if you've seen them on other construction sites, so these yellow chambers, and they can be other colors as well, but the elements, I think, stand out the most, that are constructed in a gravel envelope, really, which provides void space so that water can flow into them and infiltrate into the ground for most storm events. And then for larger storm events, you can see there's an out structure here that ties into the existing outfall. We have another one of those systems located behind the building that collects water from the roof drains. And then we also have two surface basins, and here's kind of a photo of what we anticipate that will look like. It's really just a vegetated basin. We've gotten some feedback that these areas are really shallow, and we can make them very gently sloping. They could be used as lawn areas during non-storm times, and then when water flows into them, they'll act as stormwater management features. Before we send the water to these systems, the water is required to be pretreated. That's required by both Mass DEP and the Town of Carver, and we met all of those standards. So that pretreatment is provided by the catch basins that you see located throughout the parking area, as well as around the access building, around the access for the building. All of the pavement on-site was treated to the same high level of total suspended solids treatment that's required by the town and Mass DEP for infiltration into highly permeable soils. So that's an even higher level of treatment, which is met by these proposed management practices. I think the only other thing I might note is that these existing play structures, I believe, are porous, so there will also be some infiltration. Just as water flows onto them, they'll flow right through and also feed back into groundwater. So we think that's a brief overview. If there's any speci- If there's any specific questions, we can jump into the details.
No.
Let me just give you a quick overview of the site lighting. So this plan represents the illumination levels calculated by the lighting and the types of fixtures. There's basically three fixtures that are used on the outside. There's a parking lot pole-type fixture, and that's used in these parking areas and along the entrance drives. There's a pedestrian height pole, which is a lower pole, and that's used along the front of the building and between the wings on the back of the building, where there are egress pathways that lead out from the building to the bus and fire lane. And then there are building-mounted light fixtures, which are helping to provide illumination around the perimeter of the building, just enough to get a little bit of security and, again, for egress pathways coming out of the building. All of the fixture types are LED-type fixtures, which is nice because it allows them to be really tailored to lighting just where you want the light and not providing light spillage. And so they have very good cutoff in all these fixtures. And the illumination levels are telling us that we're down to zero far earlier than when we come to the edges of the property. So all the light is really just concentrated where you need it for vehicles or pedestrians. And the LED allows the good spacing apart of fixtures, which lets us be very efficient with the poles that we have and with the energy use of the fixtures as well. And one other feature of the LED is that their very long life, they don't need to be changed for many years, which is good for the maintenance department. Are there any questions on the lighting while I'm here?
Do you have proposed lighting for the future ball fields?
We have not been asked to provide lighting for the recreational spaces. And lastly, I just want to touch on the building itself and go into the materials a little bit. So this is, it's a two-story building, and the public features of the building are really on the front side, that being the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the administrative offices. And those are all kind of the bigger volumes that you'll see here represented. And what you'll see primarily is the entrance canopy. Chuck alluded to that as part of that entry plaza design. There's a canopy that comes out to provide shelter, will be a location for the sign for the school. But that has the cafeteria immediately adjacent to it and then the entry lobby beyond. And then on the backside of the school are the wings, the three classroom wings, and those are the two-story portions with their windows. The materials for the project will be, the primary material is a concrete-based architectural block, and it's polished and ground faced, so it has a kind of, has a feel of a polished stone material. So that's the primary material. That masonry is used throughout most of the building and around the back. On the front, where the gym and the cafeteria are, we're accenting that with metal panels in addition to the expanses of glass that we have to let light in and views from the cafeteria and connections out with the gym and to let some daylight in as well. So it's the architectural concrete masonry units, it's the metal panels, and then the glass, some of which is translucent glass material, some of it is clear glass material. So that ends our presentation, and I just open it up for any other general questions or if you want to have the public...
Okay, but I think we'll go through these letters that we have here.
I just had a quick question on the, to go back to lighting for one quick second.
Yes.
On the back, that's going to be facing where the existing businesses are. Are those lights on all night?
So the lights are tied into the building management system, which allows them to be programmed. And so the program hasn't been determined yet, but what typically we see done in schools is they'd be, at a certain hour, dimmed down to a percentage of their full lighting after, you know, the regular use of the school is over for the day. And then often, at some time at night, they would be turned off or dimmed down to very low. So that needs to be worked out with the school department, but the ability is there for that to happen. And it can be, we can set it up one way when the school opens, and as time goes on, if they want to change the way it works, the ability is there to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have, let me just go through the correspondence we got about this project. We do have letters from townhouses at Chance Court, and some of them went to Mr. Ward. Could you explain what was going on at Chance Court?
Actually, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know that representatives from Chance Court are here.
Okay.
So I think they would probably like to speak for themselves.
All right, I'll open this, I'll open this up to the public, but, and then you'd be the first person, Mr. Ward, if you'd like to speak.
Maybe for this specific issue. Chad, would you like to address that, and then maybe I can just speak to you folks generally?
Good evening. So, yes, we've been working with the residents of Chance Court to address a concern they have early in the design phase. They had asked us to include provisions for a six-foot-high continuous stockade fence. At that time, we were going through a value engineering budgeting exercise. So what we had done is instruct the estimators to carry the full value in the estimate, and then it would be subject to further review from the building committee and ultimately from the Board of Selectmen. The estimators assigned a value on that, and the building committee assigned a target allowance, which was lower than the full value. And then the Board of Selectmen subsequently increased it, but still not a continuous stockade fence. More recently, we've met with Tom and had long discussions. So what we're going to be doing is actually having a 440 linear foot continuous stockade fence. It's actually indicated by this sort of red line here. So come all the way down to this existing fence. And then there are also a series of new trees here, and we're going to be working to tag and maintain the existing trees to the maximum extent possible. The exact impact will be, should be minimal. I don't think that we're going to have to pull down many of the existing trees over there. We do have a fire hydrant that punches out through the fence, but very few impacts. So I believe that the concern has been resolved to the satisfaction of the folks at Chance Court. And, Dick, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
For the record, Dick Ward, 20 West Street, chairman of the building committee. I retired as a selectman. The selectmen have reappointed me as the chair, as a member of the committee representing them, and so I'm continuing on that chair position. There are two of us from the building committee here tonight, Mr. Delapus Goldie and myself. The building committee is a very diverse committee, and we had, we've had two years now, we've been working on this project with our architects and our project manager, and they are doing an outstanding job. And we have met all the folks, the landscape architecture and everything, in numerous meetings, working over different parts of it. And we fully support their work. So that's mainly what Sean and I wanted to mention to you folks.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? So this has been, we have people here from Chance Court, and you're happy with what has been discussed?
Yes, I believe that what Chad represented is satisfactory to the Chance Court resident.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. We do have a memorandum from Fuston O'Neill, too. I don't know if you have any comments to make, Sean?
We mostly had some, what I would call, minor technical comments on the drainage report, but we don't have any issues with the approach and the methodology, and certainly the system is going to indicate a reduction in flows from the property, both rate and volume. One question I had about was the system in the back of the school. Is the school going to have a basement adjacent to that?
No, there's no basement on it.
Okay. That's it.
That's it.
Our review is limited to the drainage system, just so the board's aware.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sean.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
To Sean, just for clarification, there was a comment made from the engineers that, or the architects, that some of the water that was coming off the site on Route 58, was there a way that you looked at that, or did they look at it to try to control that water to keep it on-site instead of flowing to 58?
Yes, and they've done that in all the three watersheds that they described. They've effectively reduced the net effect of those watersheds. They've kept more on-site.
Okay.
Yep, so they're infiltrating more into the ground. They've indicated a groundwater table about 19 feet below grade with good salt conditions. So we expect improvements to all those three boundary areas we talked about.
Perfect, thank you. See, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission, and this has been approved by the Conservation Commission, so that we're all set there. And we also have something from the Fire Department. And the Fire Department requests a site walk through, oh, but we need that now, with Representative Chance Court and the project manager, to field-locate the Fire Department connection point at Chance Court. What is, does that have to be done?
That should certainly be done. It's, I don't think the planning board needs to get involved with that. I think the Fire Department can schedule that with the project manager and Chance Court at their convenience. And if it results in any revision to the path of the fire line, that would just be shown on the next set of plans as a revision.
So as far as the concerns for the planning board, they say the driveway entrances and general site conditions meet our standards for the emergency vehicle access and operation. So that, so that is approved by the Fire Department. And we also have a letter from the, in the packet for the, from the Board of Health. And they're still reviewing this?
Yep.
I have a question. The existing water source, is that at the location where you're going to, the proposed new building's going?
There's actually two drinking water wells that exist. One feeds the front building, one feeds the rear building. And they're both essentially in the footprint of the new building. So by moving those, we're going to have, the first thing that will be installed is the new drinking water well connected temporarily to the two existing buildings for the two years while it's in operation. And then as the new building is completed, a new connection will be made to the new well for that building. The existing wells will be decommissioned as part of the, once the foundation work begins on the new building.
Would they be able to be utilized for any of the landscape watering or something like that, instead of just losing?
We did look at that, and we were hoping that they could, because it's a good cost-saving measure. And one of the wells is just slightly outside of the footprint, so we're going to look at reusing that. However, the flow rate of it is far too low for the requirement of the irrigation system. So the new project is going to have an irrigation well installed, a new irrigation well.
Okay. Thank you for looking at that.
Yep.
And see, one of the concerns was the location of the trash dumpsters and recycling dumpsters and clothing dumpsters. Have you looked into that, to see where those could be put?
We haven't been requested to have any clothing dumpsters, so we're not providing a provision for those. But in terms of the school dumpsters, I can locate where those are for you. They're right off of the service area, which is where the delivery trucks will come in, the truck trucks will come in. And is there a plan, Chuck, that shows the...
Specifically, no. Yeah, I'll point you.
Okay. So, yeah, so there's actually walls which come off the face of the building, which provide enclosure on two sides. And then on the face of it will be operable gates, which will be solid, so you won't be able to see into them. And that's how the dumpsters will be accessed.
And then we have a letter from Marlene. Did you want to go through this?
Yes, if you don't mind, just a couple of things I want to draw your attention to. So it is a municipal facility allowed by right, so you are looking at this as a site plan review. And a couple of things that I noted during the conversation, the radii are 30 feet and the driveway widths are 24 feet and the aisle widths are 24 feet. So all of those meet your, conform to your regulations for your circulation patterns. Signs are exempted for municipal facilities per 3539A, so you won't need to approve a sign package. Those will just, the building commissioner will just issue the building permits for the You have heard that the fence will be revised on the next set of plans as a continuous fence. On your set, it is showing a discontinuous fence of, I think, five sections. So that'll be a revision that you'll see. And then as the Fire Department noted, at some point in there, there'll be a Fire Department gate that will be located. So that'll just be shown wherever it's determined is the best place for it. For the parking, I do want to just confirm a couple of items. The number of handicapped and van-accessible parking spaces, if you could just get the board that information when it's available. And then if you could provide the board with the parking calculations and if, so municipal facilities and your zoning bylaw is based on occupancy load, and it's one space for every three people, so if that's the calculation that you're using, just let us know that. And if it's not, just tell us how it was calculated. The lighting and landscaping conform to your standards. The Fire Department will be requesting some slight revisions to the hydrant locations. There are four hydrants proposed, essentially at the corners of the building. I haven't had a chance to sit down with the deputy chief about where exactly those need to, they want those relocated to, but I will be back in touch with you with that for the next package of revisions. And then I just want to confirm the, did I hear that the playground pavement is porous? And is there a maintenance plan for that porous pavement?
I'm not sure that there's an actual plan.
Okay.
It probably should be vacuumed.
Yeah.
Once a year. And we can find out if there's, we probably wouldn't be providing maintenance... And we can find out if there's, we probably wouldn't be providing maintenance specs for it, but we could, I'm sure that the manufacturer provides that as part of the installation process.
I can just go as well. We have an operation maintenance plan provided for the stormwater management system, and it's certainly something we can include in that as well, since it's effectively part of that.
Okay, I would recommend that the board make that a condition, that any porous pavement, whether it's playground area or elsewhere on the site, definitely be addressed as a maintenance item. And I think that's it for me.
All right. Is there anybody out in the public that would like to make any comments, ask any questions? Well, seeing none. We want to continue this to, so we can get the revisions.
Yes, so there will be a plan review meeting at the staff level on Thursday morning, as discussed with you, to kind of nail down some of these last revisions. I'll be sure to pass along all that information to the design team, so they can just do one set of revisions rather than, you know, piecemealing them. And then I, our next meeting is scheduled right now for June 14th, so we can bring it back on the June 14th agenda. It is only a site plan review, so even if Kevin and Chad can still vote on this, they're not disqualified like they are on a special permit. So it can come back on the 14th for any, you know, last-minute conditions to an approval, and go from there.
Okay, and we'll close the public meeting at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, do you want to do a site visit? Or are you familiar?
It's been a long process. I don't think we need to have a site visit, but I'm up for it if anybody wants to go.
I, I don't, I don't really need a site visit. How do you feel?
I didn't answer that question.
Seen the site a few times in the last two years.
All right, so if we could continue this?
Yep.
To the 14th one?
To the 14th of June.
Make a motion to continue the site plan for the school project to the 14th of June.
Second. So you have a motion second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys, you've all done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the next, we were supposed to go to Borrego Solar Systems, and that was a special permit. But we don't have enough board members here to hear this.
So I would recommend that technically you should open the hearing, because it has been advertised for this date. Open it and continue it without any comment or testimony, and that way it'll preserve everyone's ability to sit. And I would recommend you continue it to June 14th, Carver Town Hall at 7:00 P.M.
All right, I'll open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 24th, 2016 at 7:00 P.M. In the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Borrego Solar Systems Incorporated, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the zoning bylaw, Carver zoning bylaw, located at 19C Ward Street in Carver, Mass., assesses map 120-6-0-R, to allow a ground-mounted solar power generating facility of approximately 2.77 megawatts in a residential agricultural district. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time a place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackiecheck. And it was published, Carver Report, published dates May 6th and May 13th, 2016. So because we don't have enough members here, we'll entertain a motion to?
Make a motion to continue the special permit for Borrego Solar Systems to June 14th at 7:00.
Second. Have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask a question of Ms. McCollum. I believe there's an administrative meeting you referred to on Thursday. Is that something to which the applicant is invited, or?
No, that's a staff meeting, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry that we had to postpone the meeting, but.
We have to go before the Board of Appeals as well, because part of the relief we need is variance from certain respects. And so that hearing is only occurring in June, so this delay will not, in and of itself, set us back.
Well, we haven't seen you for so long, it was nice to see you anyway.
Nice to see you, Rich.
All right, we're going to?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd ask if we could take under discussions the residence, the Pine Ridge Sampson Pond residence next, where we have quite a few people that are here. We can do our policies afterwards, if that's okay with the board.
That sounds good to me. So we'll go to Pine Ridge Sampson Pond residences. Letters received by the board dated May 4th and May 10th, 2016, regarding the compliance with the conditions of the special permit dated May 5th, 2015. And what I'd like to do, I see a number of people are here tonight. If we could maybe hear from the developer first, and then we could hear from the residents there.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Richard Cirque, and I'm an attorney in Plymouth, and I'm here in behalf of Sampson Pond LLC, which holds the development rights in the project that we refer to as the Residence of Sampson's Pond. Let me just give you some background regarding the condominium documents and the Planning Board documents, because they're parallel, but they govern different subjects. With respect to the condominium documents, in February of 2005, the master deed for this condominium was recorded. And the master deed gave the declarant until February 18, 2015, to amend the master deed to include later phases, because this was a phased project. The master deed created units 21 through 24. In June of 2006, the master deed was amended to create Phase 2, which added units 25 through 29. In August of 2011, the development rights for the remaining units were assigned by the declarant to an LLC called Post Road Operations LLC. In December of 2012, the condominium trustees voted to extend the development rights to October 1, 2016. And I'll refer to that as the master deed deadline. The deadline set forth in the master deed to complete the incorporation of the remaining phases. And in March of 2016, the development rights were assigned by Post Road Operations LLC to Sampson's Pond LLC, of which Maria Varicione is the manager, and she's here tonight. So the condominium documents in summary provide for a deadline of October 1, 2016, to incorporate the remaining units into the condominium. Now what do the Planning Board documents say? The first special permit was issued in June of 2003, and that provided that construction of all units had to be completed by December 31 of 2007. In 2012, another special permit issued modifying the earlier one, extending the deadline to December 31, 2016. And it provided for the following order of phases. Units 17 through 20 and 12 through 16 were Phase 1, and they had to be built first. Then units 1 through 3, which were Phase 2, had to be built next. Units 4 through 7 were Phase 3, to be built next. And finally, units 8 through 11, Phase 4, would be built last. And it's my understanding that that September, that December 31, 2016 deadline may have been subsequently extended to December 31, 2017. Is that correct, Ms. McCollum?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we're dealing with two different deadlines. The special permit deadline of December 31, 2017, and the master deed deadline of October 31, October 1, 2016. Now, the intent of this board has always been to get this project finished. And now that the market has returned, the holder of the development rights intends to do just that. And as I'm sure you all know, there's construction going on right now toward that end. The special permit that was dated October 23, 2012, specifies the order in which the units have to be incorporated into the condominium. And it certainly doesn't preclude Ms. Varicione from working on all of them simultaneously, especially now in light of the looming October 1, 2016 deadline under the master deed. So to be very brief about it, the holder of the development rights, Sampson Pond LLC, is prepared to complete this project and incorporate the remaining units in the four phases indicated in your special permit dated October 23, 2012, by the deadline. Having said that, a fair question to be asked is, why do the authors of the May 4, 2016 letter want to stop completion of this project? At least that's the way I read their letter. And I'll let them answer for themselves, and I may want to speak again. But what I want to leave you with is that there are two deadlines, and we're going to comply with them both. In the spirit in which the special permit was issued on more than one occasion, is modified, and in the spirit in which the master deed was amended by the condominium trustees themselves to extend the development rights. So we intend to abide by those deadlines. So at this point, maybe it would be better to hear from the persons who brought this matter to you.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Lake. I'm the chairman of the trustees of the Pine Ridge Association. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for hearing us. We really were not prepared to speak this evening. We were understanding that we had submitted a letter for clarification of the board's intent. And if you would like further explanation, we ask for continuance, so that we could have representation here as well.
Marlene, that's what, did you have some conditions that, something that you wanted to say about this?
So since you have received these letters earlier in the month, I have done some research. As all of you know, it's been a long permitting process. And there are a number of things, at least in the Planning Board's permit, that I would like to bring the board's attention to. The last permit that I can see in your record is dated May 5th, 2015. This was essentially an extension of the 2012 permit. And it has 32 conditions listed within it. I think you all have a copy of that. I've also given you a copy of two letters that the Planning Board has requested and received from Town Council, Copelman and Page. They are both authored by John Goldrosen. One is dated October 14th, 2010, and one is dated July 16th, 2012. So obviously, you've been struggling with this for a while. Essentially, I'm giving you the history from Copelman and Page. In the 2010 letter, at the bottom of page 2, the last paragraph, the third sentence after the parentheses says, "Where it is my opinion that the permit remains in effect, it is my further opinion that the building commissioner, as the zoning enforcement officer, has the authority to enforce these construction activity conditions and issue orders, or withhold future building permits in the event that they are violated." At the top of page 3, the first full sentence, "In any event, there is no action to be taken at this time by the board, since the enforcement of the conditions of the permit is within the jurisdiction of the building commissioner." I believe this logic still holds for the current permit. The current permit is in force and effect. It was properly extended in 2015. It has not expired. It has, progress has been made on it. So it would be considered, you know, valid. And with a valid special permit, the zoning enforcement officer, which is the building commissioner under your local bylaw, is responsible for reviewing the conditions and enforcing the conditions. Now, I have sat down and gone through the conditions with him, some of which, for his enforcement, he is finding problematic. Condition number four says that the development must adhere to the original site plan as approved on June 2nd, 2003, and the final modification on October 16th, 2008. Your file is not complete as to the plans. Now, Mr. Delia Pascoli has given me a plan after your last meeting. However, the revision line number 12, the most recent revision on this plan that I received, is 13108. So I don't have a copy of the October 16th, 2008 plan, so I can't speak with any sort of certainty as to if anything is being built in compliance with this plan. So it is really, I can't do anything, and the building commissioner can't do anything until the board receives a copy of the October 16th, 2008 plan. That's imperative. Secondly, condition number 24 in this permit reads, "The Town of Carver or its representatives shall conduct periodic site inspections to verify compliance with the approved plans and to determine whether additional erosion and sedimentation controls are required." Again, when those, when the October 16th, 2008 plan is received as part of your record, I think that it would behoove you to direct me and the building commissioner and your engineer to make sure that condition number 24 is complied with. Thirdly, condition number 27 reads, "Any major revisions to plans at the discretion of the board's consulting engineer will require approval from the Town of Carver Planning Board." Again, it should be determined whether any major revisions in the? Again, it should be determined whether any major revisions, in the opinion of Fussin O'Neil, have been made, and if so, those would need to be brought to the planning Condition number 28 reads, "Developers shall establish a limit of disturbance areas and mark them in the field prior to commencement of any construction, such as the placement of construction fencing. No clearing of any vegetation shall be permitted in these areas at any time. Any disturbance to the area marked to remain shall be replaced. And any cost sanctions imposed by the town shall be paid by the applicant. The limit of disturbance shall be approved by the board's engineer before the commencement of any construction." The language is difficult, obviously, in this condition, but the last sentence is that the limit of work is supposed to have been reviewed by the board's engineer prior to commencement. I don't see the record of that happening. And again, we don't have the approved final plans. So the limit of work line should be established based on the October 16, 2008 plans, and then field checked. Lastly, the phasing, which was referenced earlier. Condition number 32 outlines what the phases will be as far as unit numbers. And I would recommend that the board instruct that the building commissioner, as his role as zoning enforcement officer, interpret the phasing plan outlined in 32, based on his reading of it, and issue building permits or not issue building permits as he sees fit. The issuance or the denial of building permits has its own separate appeal track through the Zoning Board of Appeals. And if someone disagrees with the building commissioner's decision, they can appeal as outlined in the Zoning Act to the Zoning Board. But it is not a... It is not a condition that is open for the planning board's review. It's a valid permit, and the enforcement is by the building commissioner as your zoning enforcement officer for the town. So I can't give you... I can't give you an answer without more information as to what the approved plans show. Obviously, I was not here for that. I don't have copies of them. I would respectfully ask that the board actually make a decision and take a vote to instruct me how you want me to proceed with directing the building commissioner to enforce your conditions. Please ask that the October 18, 2008... October 16, 2008 plan be provided. A large format plan that is clearly, you know, clearly readable, that we can use in the field to ensure that everything has been done per those plans. Because right now, Richard and I are unable to determine that.
So I guess the most important thing here is that we need the revised plans of October 16, 2008. I don't know, anybody on the board have any comments?
So I think that's the hang-up, Mr. Chair, is that having the revised plans of 2008 is a must before we move anywhere. I do agree with Marlene that the building commissioner, as the enforcement officer, has the jurisdiction to oversee all of our conditions that was outlined in the last revision. Also, that's why we have a engineer that we utilize to check some balances for us. And from one who has walked this path before on different projects, oversight from the planning department is a must. We've been caught before by not watching. It's cost quite a bit of time and heartache on that. So that's a must. I think all the items that were mentioned is bothersome to me that we've never got the plan. No, whether or not it got here, and it's not here, or whatever, I don't... I just want it. We have to have it as part of the record. So I would like to make a motion to have the board request the October 16, 2008 plan from the developer. I'd also, in that, request that the building commissioner enforce all our conditions per outlined, and request that Fussin O'Neil and also the planning director, upon receiving this information, go out to the site and do a survey, and make sure that all the conditions that are done. So that's my motion.
Second.
Mr. Chairman. My client does not have a copy of the plan. It was submitted, but apparently it cannot be located. But maybe... I'm wondering whether, Mr. Martin, your office may have it.
It's possible. It's getting a bit old, but it's possible we still have it.
The problem is, I'm being told that the engineer who prepared it is no longer in business.
Yeah, understood.
But... Can I speak?
I'm not really finished.
Sure, go ahead.
I think I have the floor. Thank you.
Well, before... Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Can we move on to motion first, and then we can...
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now, if you would like to...
Thank you. I would like to just submit to the planning board this presentation that we... The trustees at the time submitted to the planning board. It's entitled, "The Special Permit Position Statement, the Carver Planning Board Public Hearing of July 17, 2012," when we were... When we extended the special permit. And in it are our requested conditions, which further, I think it will help to explain our question on item 32 and the intent of that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think probably Will and I have the most institutional knowledge on this. You remember when we submitted... Bruce Salick at the time was the engineer. And those plans were submitted. I looked in the archives. I think you remember, Marlene, that when I first... When you first came onboard, I asked you to search for those. The plan I gave you is exactly the plan. There may have been some subtle revisions, but the plan originally, for lack of a better... Was originally three horseshoes, the way it was laid out, if you look at the original plan back in 2005 or '03. And it went into one large C-shaped plan, which is what that plan I showed you, that I delivered to you in the 2007 plan. That was revised. That was supported by the board and supported by the owners. And Fussin O'Neil went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and that's the plan that's being built. We will do our best to... I'm going to work with Fussin O'Neil to see if he has a location of it, and I will try to get the archives out of Bruce Salick. But these plans were submitted and signed by the planning board, Will. I mean, they, you know, back in those days, I mean, we had to submit everything. And I don't know what happened to the archives. They're a little sparse. There's nobody at fault here. There's no nefarious operation here. We're building the plan that was approved. And I'm happy to entertain both Marlene and Fussin O'Neil, anybody, and any members of the board, on Maria's behalf, to walk through the plan. I've been hired to do the site work, which is what I'm doing, and I'm very, very familiar with it. Arthur Borden is now the civil engineer of record. So... But I'll follow your direction that the board laid out tonight, and we'll do our best to close the loop on that. And the project, for what it's worth, you know, Maria can speak to you, but I introduced Maria to all of you. She's doing quite well up there. There's a lot of units that are presold. And, you know, and I can remember sitting here years ago, and I distinctly remember, I don't know if it was you, Will, or others, saying, you know, "My whole goal here is to get this project finished and put it to bed." And that was the goal we have. That's the goal, I think, the owners had, because they unanimously supported the building of these units, as you remember, at the last time we were all here. The board always wanted that. We always wanted it. The market's finally here. Let's get past the, you know, the paperwork piece, and let Maria do her thing. And that's really what we need to do. So I'll work with John over here, and we'll see what we can come up with. And I'll try to research Bruce's archives if I can get that. But it's kind of unfortunate. But the plan that I gave, Marlene, is the plan. There must have been a later revision with some comment that must have come in, a technical comment that came in. But that is substantially the plan that you already have, just so you're aware of that. Thank you.
And I would like to add that there has been a revision of that plan, and it has been recent, because the grading is not the same. So while the design of the larger C is okay, it's... We agree with that, that that... We have seen that. Some of the units have been changed to bulkheads and have severely changed the grading. And we are in question. That was part of our letter. And we want an explanation as to who approved that. And we were not consulted, and we were not informed, and I think that, according to the special permit, that we were supposed to be. So that is our specific question that we're asking for clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to follow up. Okay, quickly, yeah, very quick.
If you look at the conditions, it says you have to protect the environment, protect that tree line. If you remember way back when, there was a 200-foot setback required. This was before everybody except for Will was on the board. And that was requested, I think, by board member Sarah Hues at the time. And it was, remember, the 200-foot setback? So the land has its original topography, and you have the original tree line. What you have is three undulations up there, or three gravel escars, essentially, is what's there. And the units that the current folks own, those nine units, were all walkouts because the land, the topography worked with a walkout. So your walkout would go right to daylight into the existing tree, a canopy. In other words, you'd walk out the basement, and the trees were right there at ground level. So everything was fine. As you go along in this project, and if you remember, the... There's hills. You can't have a walkout into a hill. And the plan... And the permit specifically explains that you're supposed to work with the existing topog... Work with the environment, and not do any undermining of the trees, and keep all that original canopy in place. And the only way you can do that is to work with the grading that's there. And that's exactly what it is. So some units are bulkheads, and some units are walkouts. And the reason for that is working with the existing topography, which specifically is specified in the plan. And that's what's being done, to work with the natural conditions of the plan. So do the least amount of modification, because you have a very firm 200-foot line, and you can't modify that. So that's why, in some cases, you have walkouts; in some cases, you have bulkheads. It all depends on the way God left it. That's basically it. Nobody's changing anything. We're working with what's there. These are not changes. These are working as required by the permit, just so we're clear.
All right, thank you.
John, I think this is the only one that I... At the beginning, I wasn't a board member.
Really?
It was before I got elected. Simpson's Pond was the last thing that got approved before I got elected.
I think Vincent...
2003. Vinnie's Nossaro was...
Kevin, Kevin, Vincent, and who else? Sarah?
Sarah. It was a while ago.
I was there.
Sean, you were there. You haven't changed one bit. It's amazing, the day.
All right. Does this need to come before another meeting, or will you, the building inspector, and our engineers, take care of this?
So I would like to propose, Mr. Chairman, based on your vote, that I will work directly with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Martin to recreate the plans and inspect to the best of our ability. And I'll give you an update on July 14... Or June 14.
All right. All right. That sounds good. We're going to get the revised plans, and then Marlene will get this with the engineers and the building commissioner. And from that, they'll come up with what should be done, the next step.
What happens between now and June 14?
I would say, to try to answer your question, the process will be to abide by our decision that we had, to ensure that the building commissioner, the planning director, and our engineer goes out there with the applicant with an approved set of plans, and ensure that each item is being addressed accordingly. If there's a... The deadline issue that Mr. Cirque was talking about, between the owner's document and the developer, doesn't have a condition in ours, in our decision, that's a private issue between you guys. So as long as that the developer is in compliance with our conditions, we're in good shape.
And will who be communicating to us, with us, that that is the case?
On the 14th of our next meeting, please feel free to come back. We should have an update at that point. And we have an open public meeting here, so you'll be able to have that notification and let you know what they found. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to come to a conclusion.
I would also like to request that if you have conversations with the developer, that you also have conversations with the trust as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that. Any conversations the board has as a body happens at a public meeting.
Right. Yeah. Any discussions will be held with the planning director and the building commissioner, as we stated. And they'll bring back that information to this board, and we'll discuss it here. Okay?
Thank you. The only question that I have is, what happens if these plans can't be found?
So, yeah. I'll let you know what we can find. They... I have thoroughly searched my records. So obviously, I'll be in touch with Sean, and if you can look in your archives. But if those... It's very specific. That date is very specific. So if we don't have those plans, you have a problem with enforcing these conditions.
Well, wouldn't it be the obligation of the applicant, the developer, to provide them to us?
Yes, absolutely.
So... But we'll all work together and try to get this accomplished.
Now, these plans, if they were approved, generally, they're signed, they go to the Registry of Deeds. But in this particular instance, they didn't do that.
So it's not a subdivision, or... I mean, there is a special permit involved for the townhouse development, but... And the decision is recorded. Your decision's recorded.
So these plans don't go off to the registry?
Well, I mean, technically, yes, they should have.
But they didn't.
I haven't found them.
Oh, okay.
Let me put it that way.
All right. I guess we're going to look for the plans. And hopefully, we come up with them, you know, the faster we find them, and the faster Marlene and the building commissioner and our engineer can look at these things, the quicker this will get resolved, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. The next thing we have is a discussion on the policies for use of Chapter 44, Section 53-G accounts in peer review discussion with Meg LaMay, Finance Director. But Meg wasn't able to be here tonight.
Right. So Meg LaMay unfortunately sends her regret. She had a last-minute issue come up and can't attend tonight. However, I have been working with her since I began about how you are managing internally your review and inspection accounts. And at the last meeting, I handed out a copy of Chapter 44, Section 53-G, as well as a copy of some of your former minutes, your prior minutes. I didn't make more copies for you, because, as you know, your packet was getting a little on the heavy side tonight. But I want to briefly talk to you about this, because it is something that Meg... But I want to briefly talk to you about this because it is something that Meg and I are trying to tighten up for you internally as a, as an accounting process. And ultimately, it's, the begin, it comes down to your rules and regulations are not in effect until they're voted and then codified and recorded with the town clerk. You're also supposed to record them with the registry and land court, but almost nobody does that. But at least with the town clerk and at least have them incorporated into your documents. So the issue here is that I happened to run across some minutes from February fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, because I have absolutely nothing better to do with my time than read old minutes.
Well, let's go on record by saying thank you for your research.
Yeah.
Getting up to speed with the town.
Yeah, thank you. So in February of two thousand and eleven, you discussed some rules and regulations. Section one was employment of consultants. Section two was establishment of a special account. Section three was reimbursement of excess amount. Section four was administrative appeal. And all of this was tied to general law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G. You, Mr. Sinclair, made a motion to hold a public hearing on April fifth, two thousand and eleven. I found those minutes, you held that hearing and you voted to approve the, these rules and regulations. They never got put into your book and they never got recorded with the town clerk, so this process isn't official yet. Now, this process would, was specific to, um, let me see here, hold on one second. So this process is expenditures from this special account shall be made only for services rendered in connection with a specific project or projects for which a review and inspection fee has been or will be collected from the applicant. And you don't specify whether this is for special permits, site plan reviews or definitive plans. Now, the problem I'm having is this, this procedure does not match the procedure that you adopted in your subdivision rules and regulations that's specific to definitive plans. So Section four of your subdivision rules and regulations deals with project review fees. Section four point one is applicability, point two is submittal, determination of project review fees is number three, inspection phase is number four, handling of project review fees is number five, appeal is number six. I would really recommend that whatever process you choose, you make it consistent across the board. Please do not ask me to do one process for subdivisions and a different process for the work you do under zoning. Both of these processes have all of the necessary components, which I'll talk to. So Chapter forty-four fifty-three G is the municipal finance law and you're, so these review and inspection accounts are revolving, they're special revolving funds. And usually on a town meeting warrant, revolving funds have to be allocated every year by town meeting. These are an exception to that rule. You can, it's a revolving fund that does not have to be further allocated, but you have to be very careful in how you're managing it and how you're applying it. And you're, you're actually not eligible to use these funds or to collect these funds unless you have written rules and procedures. So any city or town that provides by rules promulgated under Section nine or twelve of Chapter forty A, so that is zoning, nine and twelve are, nine is special permits, twelve is rules and regulations for anything done under zoning. Section twenty-one of Chapter B is our comprehensive permits, specific to the zoning board of appeals. Section eighty-one Q of Chapter forty-one is subdivision control law, specific to planning boards. Section thirty-one of Chapter one eleven are boards of health or by rules promulgated by a conservation commission established by a city or town under Chapter eight C of Chapter, Section eight C of Chapter forty. So these accounts can only be used by planning boards, zoning boards, boards of health and conservation commissions. That's it. That, those are the only groups that are eligible to allow for these, to collect these fees. And their, these fees are, are for the imposition of reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants, may deposit such fees into a special account. There's an appeal process and there are standards for, standards for grounds of appeal. Essentially, there's either conflict of interest or the consultant, it does not meet minimum requirements for education and experience. Those are the only two grounds for appeal. The funds shall be kept separate and they shall be expended at the direction of the authorized board or authority without further appropriation. So they, they're supposed, so each project is supposed to be kept separate and, and accounted for individually, which is why I'm working with Meg to make sure the proper structure is in place accounting-wise to do that. And expended without further appropriation means it don't have to be authorized by town meeting every year. They're to be expended by the board or authority only in conjunction, in connection with carrying out its responsibilities under the law. So if you're reviewing a zoning permit, a special permit under zoning, you're supposed to be reviewing within the confines of Chapter forty A. You're not supposed to be pulling from all different things. So the review is supposed to be within your competent area of jurisdiction. That's why each board is allowed to set up their own account. So the board of health has their rules and regulations, the planning board has their rules and regulations, the CONCOM has their rules and regulations and same for the zoning board. And your, your review is supposed to be in connection with carrying out your responsibilities under the law that you're working under. And then at the end of the project, any excess fees are repaid to the applicant. So there's some room in your practice internally to, to tighten this up and it is something that Meg and I have both identified that would be good for you to do, especially with subdivisions because they can, they can last so long. Someone can record a Mylar and they can wait forever, they can wait for decades to build the road and inspect, inspect their utilities and, and their construction. And what has happened is that I'm having a hard time piecing together the history. So I'm having a hard time being 100% certain that I'm accurately accounting for everybody's costs and revenues essentially. The town moved its financial software over a couple of years ago to a new program and there have, there, there are multiple systems of accounting for these funds in place in the files. So I'm gonna recommend the planning board take some time to look at both your subdivision control rules and the language you voted in two thousand and eleven. Either one meets all their requirements of fifty-three G. You can go either route, but I am gonna recommend you hold a hearing and you pick one system for me, please, not two. And hold a hearing and adopt it across the board for all of the work you do under both zoning and subdivision control because I, I really strongly recommend that we follow fifty-three G to the letter and put the appropriate systems in place to make sure everybody is 100% clear about the funds that were received and then expended.
Is that something that we can do at our next meeting or the meeting after? How long do you need to?
I think a rules and, I think rules and regu, I don't know, I'm not gonna guess. I can't, I have so many deadlines for advertising that I can't remember. The Water District has to advertise once. I don't know how many times the planning board has to advertise.
Hey, that's why you should pay the bills.
So let me check that and with your permission, with your permission, give me the time to advertise appropriately for a public hearing and I'll put it on that agenda for a public hearing. You can have both schemes, I'll give you both schemes, you can talk about both of them. You can, and you can do whatever you want. You can combine them, you can change them, you can adopt one or the other, but I, but you, you're covered, let's just say, on subdivision control. That is, that's clearly adopted. I have, I have the entire legislative history, they're on file with the town clerk, no problem. It's, I don't have that level of certainty that this was ever put in place for, for zoning work.
So you'll have those two schemes ready for us, maybe the next meeting or?
Yes, I'll email, I'll email them to you in advance.
Okay.
And so you have them and I'll work out on the calendar, you know, I'll work out on the calendar and the schedule as to how you can, how much time I need for, for an advertising date. I should obviously know that, but I don't, but I can't remember.
So I could, I'd like to make a motion that this board schedule a hearing on the information that was provided us and schedule that hearing as long as we have appropriate, date to be determined, as long as the appropriate timeline is, for postings is done. That'll be my motion. So then she can, we can find out the amount of days tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can work and then, whether it's the fourteenth or our following meeting, she can at least post it, get it out there for that meeting. So that's my motion.
Second. And it's a good idea. Have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank Meg for us for-
I definitely will.
Is there a dramatic difference between the two?
Um, the subdivision rules and regulations are actually much more in depth and much more detailed. The, and I'm gonna recommend that you, I'm really, I'm, I'm actually gonna, you have to hold your hearing and everything, but I'm gonna recommend that you look hard at adopting the subdivision rules and regulations. It gives you a lot more certainty in the process. It gives the applicant a lot more certainty in the process. On, um, the language that you adopted in, that I found in the minutes of two thousand and eleven is expenditures from this special account may be made at the direction of the director of planning and community development under the overall guidance of the planning board without further appropriation. I think that's a little too loose. Let me just be honest with you. I don't, I think that you want to control the process a little bit more than just wide discretion. I think that, and in, in con, in contrast, the subdivision rules and regulations make it your call all the way. In addition to an administrative fee, the planning board shall impose a project review fee on those applications which require, in the judgment of the planning board, review by outside consultants due to size, scale or complexity of a proposed project, the project's potential impact, or because the town lacks the necessary expertise to perform the review work related to the permit or approval. So I really feel like the town is better protected if it's a majority vote of the planning board to determine this rather than whoever might be in any particular position at any time. And it allows you to kind of weigh your capacity based on the project and based on the realities of what else is going on here locally at any given point in time. So obviously, if, you know, if you feel like this is a very simple project where there's really no changes to the existing conditions, like, like the landscaping company, they just moved in. They just parked some trucks and moved into a building and there was, there was no site work at all. You know, that's very different than building a new elementary school and that gives you the ability to decide. So, but I'll send you both. I'm gonna recommend that, that the authority and control stay with you. You would obviously direct me to do the day-to-day administration, you know, the day-to-day process of, of it, but it would be your decision on, on making those calls.
Thank you. Then go ahead and see what you can do with that so we can have a meeting on, a public meeting on that. All right, we have, any planning board member notes tonight?
Mr. Chair, just have a couple. Our last master plan meeting, unfortunately, we were, we lacked a quorum, so we couldn't proceed on that. So our next meeting, I'm hoping that we have a quorum, we have a lot of work to do, so I think that's important. Also, I want to make the board aware that the redevelopment authority has been working on an urban renewal plan for the North Cave area. That will be coming to this board sometime in the near future, so just to give you an update on that. The only other thing that I have is everybody celebrate this weekend responsibly. For me personally, I, I take it at heart and I will extend those warm wishes to the officer that was slain down this week. That's a tragedy and a hero, another hero lost. So this weekend, while we're all celebrating with our families, just keep that in your thoughts.
Thank you, Will.
I just wanted to thank everybody that participated in the Kane Strong golf outing on Saturday. It was a great success and the town really came together on that, so thank you.
Great job, Jim.
We have the minutes of May tenth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence, if any.
None tonight.
And so our next meeting will be June fourth, two thousand and sixteen, June fourteenth. Yeah, June fourteenth.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could just talk about the schedule for a second as we're getting into the summer. June looks to be okay with meetings on the fourteenth and twenty-eighth. July, Jim's gonna be out of town on the nineteenth, is that right?
What's one in June that we gotta push back? Right originally?
Uh, no, June should be your, June will be your normal schedule, the fourteenth and twenty-eighth. And then July, I had sent out a vacation request to see if people can attend on the nineteenth.
That's right, I'm sorry.
And just have one meeting in July, and I think you responded that you were out of town on the nineteenth.
Right.
So I am out of town on July twelfth, Jim's out of town on July nineteenth. That leaves July fifth, which is probably a terrible idea, and July twenty-sixth. For the three of you, is there, do you know of any conflicts if we had a meeting scheduled for July twenty-sixth?
I don't have anything, I'm clean.
And I think you said you were back by then.
Yes, yep.
Okay. So unless you wanna meet on July fifth, it looks like one meeting in July, the last Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
All right.
Okay?
Second. Have a motion- Have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone. Thank you.